Good evening. Welcome to Jefferson County Board of Education regular meeting on Monday, November 10th, 2025. If you'd please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
That was perfect. You guys have been practicing. All right. First up this evening, we have some student and staff recognitions.
Good evening. Tonight, we have several staff recognitions, beginning with the award of the Champion of College Access and Success to both Jefferson High School and Washington High School. And I believe we have a couple of our counselors and administrators with us this evening that we asked to come forward. This honor from the College for West Virginia recognizes schools that demonstrate exceptional dedication to preparing students for life after graduation. To earn champion status, schools must take part in college application and exploration week, celebrate college decision day, and either increase their FAFSA completion rate by 5% or reach a 60% completion rate overall. This year, Jefferson High School earned the title for the third time, and Washington High School received the honor for the first time. Congratulations to both schools for their outstanding commitment to student success beyond high school. Because all of our recognitions this evening are staff, we're going to hold pictures to the end. Next up this evening, we have our All-Star Staff Recognizations. These are back from last year, which is where every meeting, we have all of our schools or a school will select or two to come and recognize a service personnel and a professional personnel within their building who exemplify what it means to be an excellent JCS employee. And this evening, Mr. Astorino has also brought us a bonus service provider as well. Mr. Astorino, would you like to come present?
Good evening, Madam President, members of Jefferson County School Board, Dr. Bishop, and all those in attendance this evening. This evening, I would like to recognize three exceptional staff members who share many admirable qualities. Each of these individuals pour their hearts into educating and serving our students and community, consistently going above and beyond their everyday roles. While I'm incredibly proud and grateful for the entire Ranson team, these three individuals stand out as shining examples of what it truly means to be devoted Ranson Rocket. Their dedication, passion, and unwavering commitment reflect the best of our school values. The first All-Star staff member to recognize this evening is Mrs. Michaela Dillo. Mrs. Michaela Dillo is one of our outstanding ECATs at Ranson Elementary, currently serving in first grade. She brings a heart of gold to everything she does, consistently going above and beyond with tireless dedication and a radiant smile that reflects her even bigger heart. Her compassion for students is evident in every interaction, and she truly exemplifies what it means to be a Ranson Rocket. Recently, Mrs. Dillo led a county-level training for ECATs, showing her leadership and expertise. She collaborates closely with our academic coaches and fellow ECATs to train, model, co-facilitate sessions on UFLY, iReady, learning stations, and so much more. Her full steam ahead attitude is a testament to commitment and enthusiasm for her role. Mrs. Dillo knows most of our students by name and greets families each morning with a warm, genuine welcome. Her presence is a daily reminder of our school's theme this year, every student, every day. Mrs. Dillo, we at Ranson deeply appreciate all that you do. Your dedication, kindness, and leadership make a lasting impact on our school community. Our second All-Star to recognize this evening is Mrs. Jennifer Dixon. Mrs. Jennifer Dixon has been a vital part of Ranson Elementary for over five years, serving as our multi-categorical teacher. At the heart of her work is a deep commitment to building meaningful relationships. It truly is who she is. Mrs. Dixon works tirelessly alongside her dedicated aide to support students with a wide range of differentiated needs. Her classroom is a place of growth, success, and compassion. Much of this success stems from her intentional and passionate approach to teaching. She brings a deep understanding of each student, both personally and academically, and uses that insight to create learning experiences that are truly transformative. Mrs. Dixon is not only a lifelong learner herself, but she also challenges herself daily to grow and evolve, always striving to be the best educator she could be. Beyond her classroom, Mrs. Dixon is a teacher leader in our school. She serves on multiple school leadership teams and faculty senate committees, contributing her voice and vision to our broader school community. This year, she launched a student-created and student-led newspaper, a remarkable initiative that gave her students a powerful outlet for expression. The first edition was actually published just last week, and it stands as a testament to her belief in her students' voices and their true potential. Through this project, Mrs. Dixon has empowered some of our most vulnerable learners to feel seen, heard, and valued. She has created a space where every student can experience success and make an impact on their own in their own unique way. Mrs. Dixon is a true inspiration to all of us at Ranson Elementary, and we are very deeply grateful for the light she brings to our school, both inside and outside the classroom walls. This is Jennifer Dixon. And our last All-Star to recognize is, we said, we have a bonus. So this evening, I would like to recognize also an integral member of the Ranson School Community as a service provider, critical to our students, Mrs. Kate Beeler. Mrs. Kate Beeler serves as our primary LEAP teacher at Ranson this year, bringing her passion for education all the way from the great state of Oregon. From day one, she has given her all to support and uplift our LEAP students, devoting countless hours each day to meet their diverse academic, emotional, and behavioral needs. Mrs. Beeler leads with heart, compassion, and an unwavering commitment to doing what's best for her students. No two days in her classroom are the same, yet the growth we've seen in her students already this year has been nothing short of inspiring. Her students are thriving, not only within the classroom, but also in generalized settings, engaging with peers, participating in cooperative play. Watching these interactions unfold is a true testament to her impact. Supported by two outstanding aides, Mrs. Beeler has cultivated a classroom environment that feels like family, built on trust, care, and a shared purpose. Her leadership and dedication have created a space where every child is valued and supported. More than an educator, Mrs. Beeler is a voice for her students, a steady hand to hold, and a powerful agent of change. Her presence is a daily embodiment of our school's theme of every student, every day. This is Kate Beeler. Thank you.
And I'll pause to take a few photos, and then that completes our recognitions. If the counselors could just come back to the podium for just a moment, just so we could recognize each of you individually.
Okay. I do want to recognize, as you said, all of our counselors by name. So from Washington High School, we have Ms. Stunts, Ms. Soto, Ms. Sacks, and Ms. Manley. And from Jefferson High School this evening, we have Ms. Jobb, Ms. Babington, Ms. Biggie, and Ms. Wright.
Thank you very much. I know that is a huge accomplishment. I mean, it's something Jefferson's only gotten three times. In Washington, this was your first time ever. So congratulations. And I know, I believe each of your schools has a counselor that has been state-recognized recently. So just, you know, congratulations overall. You guys have come a long way in the past few years since that A-word, the audit that we had. So I just want to personally congratulate you on all the strides that you've made and the awards that you're getting from the state. So thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Springer. All right. Next, we have citizens comment, approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from October 27th, 2025?
I'm motion.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Upson. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes from October 27th, 2025, say aye. Oppose? Thank you very much. Next, we have citizens comments. First up is Ainsley Gray, followed by Heather Harwood. And just a reminder, speakers are limited to three minutes, and speakers may not engage in negative or derogatory statements that use names or positions by which persons can be identified, please. So first up is Ainsley. Just give me one moment to set the timer here. All right, ma'am, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Ainsley Gray, and I'm a ninth grader at Jefferson High School. I'm here to express my concerns about how the district keeps changing the way in which they'll financially support students taking the AP exams. We've gone from one, parents only needing to pay half of the cost towards the beginning of the year, to two, the parents paying all of it, but being fully reimbursed 10 years, 10 months later, sorry, if the student passes, to three, the district only reimbursing half if they pass. And that's only if this district doesn't change it again. I am currently taking one AP class. My brother, who's a senior, is taking three. My family has been affected by the government shutdown, and we have been forced to rely on relatives to pay the $400 fee for these four exams. Our mission statement says, Jefferson County Schools will ensure that all students value themselves and others, contribute to their community, and succeed in a global society. With my first semester of high school almost done, I have gotten the impression that many students are neither truly interested in education anymore nor are trying to strive for excellence. This may be partly because the district is showing that they don't value myself and my fellow students in our quest for success in a global society. By changing the AP policies with payment randomly and without much warning, thus making it harder to afford AP exams, the district is making students not want to achieve excellence and also value their education less. The district is already in trouble for not having enough kids take the AP exam per the county approval status and accreditation report from West Virginia Department of Education. This is the third year we have not met post-secondary achievement standards. One way this indicator is measured is by students taking AP exams. By taking away this money, you are only making it harder for them. You are punishing the students who are already in the classes, trying to save the district scores in the middle of the school year. Not only that, you have a lot of government employees in your district, and you're doing this during a government shutdown. I believe that this decision was wrong and in contrast to the goal of getting off this watch list. We want you to fix it before the start of next year, and most importantly, include AP students and teachers in the decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Heather Harwood, followed by Sarah Brandenburg.
Good evening. My son is a sophomore at Jefferson High School. I'm here to advocate for him over the recent decision to restrict gains on the high school Chromebooks. I understand that Chromebooks can't, that games on Chromebooks can be a distraction, but for some kids like my son, they are a lifeline. He's a good kid and a good student. Last year, one of his teachers told me that he wished all his students could be like him. He is currently earning straight A's in his classes. Despite his successes, he has barely any interest in attending college because he has so disliked his school experience. In his old school district in Texas, his unhappiness was largely due to the stress and anxiety of a school putting pressure on high academic performance. Here in Jefferson County, it has largely been due to the disruptive behavior of fellow classmates that makes much of his day so unpleasant. He has always struggled socially because of his neurodivergence. He has few friends. Being able to play Minecraft Education Edition, a game that uses creative problem-solving, once he has finished his classwork and is waiting for the bell, allows him to distance himself from the stress of his day and the distractions of his classmates. Playing Minecraft gives him a creative outlet as he sits alone at lunch. The game has never distracted him from learning, but it has given him a lifeline to get him through the hardest parts of his day. When the things that make his day bearable is taken away, he sees it as teachers hating kids. In his mind, this is what you do when you want to make him feel unwelcome and unseen. And he feels he's been grouped into a mass punishment for misuse of gameplay when he is innocent. I'll remind you that, as I understand it, there are already restrictions in place. Teachers already use Go Guardian to restrict gameplay, and kids are only supposed to be playing games with the teacher's permission. Please reconsider this choice of removing games, specifically Minecraft, from their Chromebooks. Consider other ways to give students the right time to play. After all, play is learning. Playing games, especially a game like Minecraft, develops even a high schooler's ability to problem-solve and think critically and experiment. Games provide a safe place to take risks and develop adaptability and resilience. And games are an outlet that reduces stress and anxiety, which most teenagers, especially my son, desperately need. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Brandenburg, followed by Chris Anders.
Good evening. Members of board, Superintendent Bishop, thank you again for allowing me time to speak. I come before you again, almost three months into the school year, to continue to ask for exit interviews and an investigation into why 12 teachers and six staff members, the official number that I was given last week, left Blue Ridge last year. For three months, I have not been able to answer my son when he asked why some of his favorite dedicated teachers left him and his classmates in such large numbers without saying goodbye. And for three months, I have not been able to reassure my children that this unprecedented loss of staff will not continue to happen, especially in light of the loss of the school's librarian just a few weeks ago, who worked so hard to get her dream job at that school. I urge you to find out exactly what the underlying cause of this mass exodus from my children's school is, because we cannot afford to lose more amazing teachers, and our children deserve answers. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Chris Anders.
Well, good evening. My name is Chris Anders. I'm a state delegate, but I wrote down what I was going to say tonight, so I won't hold the floor like I do in Charleston. My name is Chris Andrews. I'm here tonight as a concerned community member and representative of families in our area who care deeply about the future of our schools, especially the well-being of our teachers and the success of our students. I want to address what's become a serious and growing concern at Blue Ridge. From what I've learned, 18 staff members have already left the school, and I'm hearing that many more are currently considering it. That type of turnover is not normal, and it's not sustainable. It sends shockwaves through the entire school community, hurting morale, disrupting classrooms, and leaving parents and students uncertain about the future. When that many professionals, dedicated people who have invested their time, energy, and hearts into serving our children choose to walk away, it demands attention and action. We simply cannot afford to lose more good educators and support staff. Our children deserve stability, and our teachers deserve an environment where they can thrive, not burn out or feel ignored. Now, I'm not here to assign any blame or to point fingers, but I'm here to ask for answers and accountability. We owe it to our teachers, our students, and our taxpayers to know why this is happening and what will be done to fix it. I respectfully ask the board and the superintendent to take the following actions. First, to conduct a thorough and transparent investigation into the causes of this turnover. This means honest, confidential exit interviews and climate surveys that truly capture what the staff are feeling. Secondly, identify patterns or reoccurring concerns, whether they involve leadership, workload, communications, morale, or other issues that may be contributing to this exodus. And third, report your findings publicly and outline concrete steps that will be taken to stabilize staffing, rebuild trust, and ensure Blue Ridge remains a place where people want to work and students can learn in a positive, consistent environment. I want you to know that I'm also reaching out and speaking directly to my constituents, parents, and former staff to better understand what's going on. People are asking hard questions, and they deserve honest answers. The community is watching closely, not out of hostility, but out of genuine concern for the school and the people serving. Our teachers are the heart of education. When we lose them in such large numbers, it's not just a staffing issue, it's a crisis of confidence. And it will take transparency, leadership, and real engagement with those on the front lines to turn it around. I urge this board and the superintendent to treat this situation with the urgency it deserves. The parents, students, and staff of Blue Ridge are counting on you to listen, to act, and restore stability and trust in the school community. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service to our children and their families.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. This is Lauren.
Good evening. Do you not have any changes to the personnel actions that are presented to you this evening for consideration?
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented, say aye. Oppose? All right, thank you. And Dr. Joy, if you're online, I couldn't, I don't think, Ms. White, did you hear?
Yep, I said aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lauren.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a presentation on salary review and pay table update.
Hello, I'm Kristin Cameron, Chief Financial Officer for Jefferson County Schools.
Hello, I'm Amy Lauren, Chief Human Resources Officer for Jefferson County Schools.
Hello, I'm Kelsey Springer, Director of Communications and Public Information for Jefferson County Schools.
Good evening. Our presentation this evening is an update on Jefferson County Schools' compensation and strategy for professional positions and classified service positions. Basically, a state of the state on pay in West Virginia and Jefferson County Schools. Next slide, please. The agenda for the presentation is to cover JCS key budget components, the salary review process and findings, a pay table update, and next steps. Next slide, please. The budget components entail salary, programs, operational efficiencies, and staffing. Staffing. This evening, we will focus on salary with the additional puzzle pieces to presented, to be presented over the next several months. Next slide, please. The JCS salary review will cover the timeframe it was conducted, the process and methodology, and key findings. Next slide, please. I first want to introduce the group of experienced individuals who helped with the review of our JCS salaries. Compensation strategy is a unique area of HR and finance that requires experienced professionals in this specialty. These individuals included Kristin Cameron, our CFO, who has a strong background in payroll and accounting; Angelina Francisco, background in different industries in finance and payroll; Denise Pacharka, HR, background as a teacher, HR experience in education, government, and manufacturing; Rachel Ringler, human resources, background as a teacher, special education, and support service personnel for Jefferson County Schools; Samantha Vines, HR, background as a teacher, and supports professional personnel for Jefferson County Schools; and then myself, Amy Lauren, background in human resources, compensation strategies, and experience in industries, including education, higher education, and hospitality. We spent the past several months reviewing compensation, salaries, challenges, and opportunities. Our method was to review salaries in Jefferson County Schools, top 10 counties in West Virginia, border counties to Jefferson County Schools, and comparable school systems. As a disclaimer, this was not a full-scale compensation study. For compliance, a full-scale compensation study is completed by a third party, which we are not. Third-party compensation studies have already been completed twice in the past seven years. We know and understand those results, and our purpose of this review is to determine what salaries look like now, where Jefferson County Schools is positioned, what do we aim for, and what is needed for compliance purposes. As part of the salary review, you need at least five to 10 data points. We started this process in fiscal year '25 and transitioned into fiscal year '26, which is current, and more than three months out, which legitimizes the data. Anything considered in fiscal year '25 was aged, using the proper aging formula to bring the data current. The review consisted of the professional pay scale and the service pay scale. We started looking at the beginning pay. To provide a more accurate compensation review, we looked at the average pay scale and not the average salaries, since each organization will have different experience levels and degrees as their unique average. With professionals, you have jobs that are going to be more of the same across different school systems, teaching positions or teaching positions. Service classification, each system has differences. Different work schedules, for example. Therefore, local industries outside of education were used, and the hourly rate was the best method to review service pay. Next slide, please. We met twice with representatives from the professional organizations to review the material and to receive feedback. Factors that impact salary reviews and decisions include advocacy, the state funding formula alignment, operational efficiency, which is operational efficiency, which is in our control, the state funding formula, which is the basis of compensation in West Virginia, and student needs, which is out of our control. Let's jump into the findings. Next slide, please. As you may know, salaries are not competitive to the cost of living in Jefferson County or with bordering school systems. Also, we are still experiencing national shortages in teaching, bus operators, custodians, substitutes, for example. Coupled with health insurance increases nationally, and most importantly, at the state level, our compensation is impacted. Compensation remains a key impediment in recruiting and retaining talent in Jefferson County Schools. For service personnel, we will go into more detail on the next slide, but on an hourly basis, Jefferson County Schools is generally comparable for a seven-and-a-half-hour work schedule and a two-hundred-day employment term. However, any slight hourly increase in another industry, even a dollar, will negatively impact our competitiveness. Many of our service personnel can transition into higher-paying, customer-service-related positions in the area. Hourly rates are not competitive with the cost of living in Jefferson County. Pay tables in West Virginia do not reflect current compensation best practices. An updated and current service pay structure is needed in West Virginia and one that includes higher-tiered classifications and specialized roles, which find that Jefferson County Schools is not comparable for higher-paid grade levels. As an example, electricians and plumbers. Next slide, please. As I stated, we would go into more detail on the next slide about the comparable hourly rates. You can see that the starting hourly rate for service positions in Jefferson County Schools is eighteen dollars and seventy-six an hour and goes up to twenty-one dollars and seventeen cents. In the chart below, you can see the industries in the area that offer hourly rates from Hollywood Casino, Walmart Parks and Rec and Sheets to Berkeley County Schools and Loudoun County Schools. The beginning hourly rate for these positions are fourteen dollars an hour to twenty-three forty-six. So we fall in that range, but the chart also shows and reflects that our higher-skilled positions at twenty-one seventeen an hour are not comparable to the twenty-three dollars and forty-six cents, which is at the higher range. Next slide, please. For professional positions, Jefferson County Schools is not competitive with professional teaching salaries. Jefferson County Schools is not in the top ten in West Virginia without levy pay. Jefferson County Schools is below the salary min of bordering counties and comparable systems. How does this happen? At the state level, for historical purposes, we were recently provided with a couple of increases, combined with our local contributions, that started to put us on track with our starting professional salaries as competitive. But then, PEIA increases absorb those gains. One step forward, two steps back. Bordering school systems have abilities to provide increases generously, which creates widening pay gaps. Let's look at the charts. Next slide, please. This chart provides information on the bordering and comparable systems. The lowest-paying one is sixty-one five-one-seven, with the highest at ninety-six. The median is seventy-two thousand five hundred and five. Jefferson County is at sixty thousand, roughly, without the local contributions, which shows that we are outside of the range for bordering systems and comparable systems. Next slide, please. This information represents West Virginia top ten with the average professional salary scales. Salary information, the lowest is reflected at sixty-one three hundred and seventeen. Jefferson County comes in at sixty thousand, again roughly, without the levy. The median is sixty-two thousand. So as you can see, this shows that we are outside of the top ten and what Jefferson County's number represents without the levy treatment is sixty thousand. We represent twenty-fifth in the state. And those states or those counties with their salary amounts in the top ten, that is reflecting their local contributions. Our local contributions would place us as number one. It would raise that sixty thousand there. Next slide, please. Again, just another comparison with the bordering and comparable systems at the top and then the West Virginia top ten at the bottom, where it shows the min at sixty-one midpoint seventy-two, the max at ninety-six. West Virginia top ten, salary min sixty-one, salary midpoint sixty-two, salary max sixty-three. Next slide, please. So what are we aiming for? Better alignment of local funds into salaries and to be more competitive with a long-term goal of increasing local pay and advocacy for sustainable pay structures. As a starting point, address the local contribution to impact salaries now. As a starting point, again, all of this is a starting point. The local contribution has an impact to our salaries. If all local contribution is treated as salary, the beginning of the salary scale would be at forty-nine thousand roughly, and then the meeting of the salary scale would be at sixty-four, and as I mentioned, would place us number one. Provide continuous salary review information to inform conversations and make recommendations. With the levy treatment, it brings us approximately eight thousand dollars outside of the salary mid of the border review. Increase national board certification participation. Through the Office of Professional Development, if we create programming for more national board certification opportunities, it provides a teacher with a state stipend and the county match totaling seven thousand dollars. This information needs to be provided and shared to individuals who can advocate and make changes and recommendations to compensation in West Virginia school systems in Jefferson County. As we mentioned with the bordering school systems and what constraints they do not have, we need legislative support, providing at least eight thousand dollars into each employee to start. Next slide. In addition to what was mentioned, recommendations include: A compensation strategy requires action locally and at the state level. Counties are responsible for fiscal sustainability, which requires a multifaceted approach. Advocate for legislation to modify the salary increase process to reflect different counties. Advocate for updated West Virginia pay tables that reflect the best and current compensation practices and PEIA funding. Advocate for recognition that border counties, especially in the eastern panhandle, require a more appropriate approach. Adjust the pay scale where we can and emphasize and support the reasons why Jefferson County Schools is a great place to work. One thing I want to mention is that PIA open enrollment is in April. Please make sure that you are aware of the changes to the amounts and benefit plan options that PIA provides for updates to help insurance and costs for the next school year. Open enrollment is the time to make any changes to your plan coverage and to review if you need to make any changes for your personal circumstances. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Kristin Cameron to go over the pay table changes, the why, and additional information that is important to share this evening. Thank you.
This evening, I'll be presenting some information regarding necessary pay table updates. Next slide, please. So why are we discussing this now? Equalizing levy pay was a commitment made during last fall's excess levy presentations. At that time, we committed to funding local portions of service salaries at the same level as professional salaries. Also, some questions were raised with WVDE during discussions about locality pay and the necessity for those. During that discussion, guidance was given that all supplemental salary items funded locally should be paid as a part of the employee's regular pay as a part of our pay tables and are not allowed to be paid in lump sums. And this equalization would provide overall salary improvement for our service personnel. Revising the pay tables to include all local funds provide salary transparencies and improvements across the board to assist in recruiting and retaining employees. These changes would also bring us into legal compliance with WVDE guidelines, PEA rules, and into compliance with CPRB. Next slide, please. There are two components to the pay table updates. The first component is equalizing local pay for service personnel to match our professional personnel levels. That would include both our regular, what we refer to often as levy pays, and the twenty-five-year Jefferson County experience pay. The second component is that all salary supplements, again commonly referred to as levy pays, would be rolled up into the Jefferson County Schools' pay table. Next slide, please. We'll start with discussing equalizing local pay for service personnel. Local salary supplements are intended to address the cost of living in our area. We all shop at the same grocery stores, buy homes in the same neighborhoods, and pay the same local taxes. Given that we all contribute to and are affected by the same local economy, it stands to reason that we should all benefit equally from the local funding supported by these tax dollars. Regardless of job classification, every Jefferson County Schools employee plays a vital role in our schools and community and deserves equitable recognition through our locally-funded compensation. Next slide, please. You'll see here that our current levy pays for professional personnel begin at three thousand six hundred and fifty and end at five thousand one hundred and fifty, based on years of experience. These are currently split into three payments, one in November, one in March, and one in May. You'll see our service personnel begin at twenty-five fifty and top out at thirty-four hundred with twenty years of experience. These proposed changes would equalize that and increase service personnel by the beginning salary of eleven hundred and at twenty years of experience by one thousand seven hundred and fifty. Next slide, please. As shown in this slide, on the top graphic, you will see that, you know, as Amy presented previously, the starting salary is eighteen seventy-six to twenty-one seventeen. Increasing the local portion of our salary and adding that to the pay table would show at the bottom on the proposed updates where the starting salary would start at twenty-one thirty-seven and top out at twenty-three seventy-eight for the starting salary. All staff would see an hourly increase of a minimum of two dollars and sixty-one cents an hour, up to a maximum of three dollars and sixty-eight cents an hour when they reach that twenty-year of experience mark. This salary increase would be reflected in all extra-duty work performed by current Jefferson County employees. We have employees who are always willing to step in and cover where needed. With the current substitute shortage, we often have opportunities for various classifications of employees to step in and substitute as custodians or cooks or bus drivers. All of these additional hours will be compensated at the new hourly rate, which would also apply to any extra-duty work, you know, by bus drivers or custodians, et cetera. If you refer back to Amy's slide, you will see that this does bring us much closer to our competitors' starting salaries. Next slide, please. As a part of our commitment to equalize the local salary supplements to service personnel and professional personnel with twenty-five years of experience, will both receive two thousand dollars annually. Currently, service personnel receive a thousand dollars and professional personnel receive two thousand. So this would double that supplement for our service personnel. Again, based on WVDE guidance, this could no longer be paid as a lump sum, but instead, it would be paid as a contract addendum, similar to the payment of college hours for service personnel or national board certification for professional personnel. It would then be divided equally among each pay. Currently, over eight percent of Jefferson County Schools staff receive this additional supplement. I just think that's a great testament to the commitment of our staff to Jefferson County Schools and what a great place to work Jefferson County Schools is. Next slide, please. The second portion of the pay table update would be rolling all local supplements up into the pay table. Again, based on WVDE guidance, we are not allowed to pay lump-sum payments. All of our local salary supplements, commonly referred to as levy pays, would be rolled into the pay table. That means no more lump-sum payments in November, March, and May. The total salary, including the local supplemental pays, would be included in the pay table and divided equally into each pay. Based on our data analysis, all staff will have more money in their pockets each payday. No employees will receive less in total financial compensation than they do right now. It will simply be distributed differently. Next slide, please. The top portion of this slide shows where Jefferson County is currently when comparing the starting salary midpoint versus the average midpoint. As you can see, we're below the midpoint in both analysis points based on the review presented earlier by Ms. Laurine. The bottom portion shows the updated salary information with our local levy funds included in the pay table and where we would land at the midpoints in that analysis. It would put us at the midpoint, it would put us above the midpoint in both the starting and average for West Virginia counties. As Mrs. Laurine discussed in her analysis, without additional support for locality pay from state legislature, it will remain extremely difficult to be competitive with our border counties. Next slide, please. PEIA is always a concern, the increase in PEI premiums when we discuss increased salary. This equalization and roll-up of local supplemental pay will increase some people's monthly PEI premiums. However, based on our analysis, everyone will still see an increase in their net monthly pay. Obviously, we have no control over future PEIA changes, but this is based on our current analysis. The professional staff impact, as shown in this graphic, you'll see twenty-five point six percent of professional staff will see an increase. As you see, one hundred and ninety-five professional staff are anticipated to see a PEI increase due to the roll-up. However, of that one hundred and ninety-five, only one hundred and twenty-two will see, one hundred and twenty-two will see an increase less than fifty dollars a month. That sixty-two percent of those receiving an increase will receive less than fifty-dollar-a-month increase. Recall that rolling up the levy will provide a minimum of one hundred and thirty-one twenty-five in gross pay per check. Therefore, no one will see an increase in premiums greater than their increase in pay. The maximum increase in premiums would be ninety-seven dollars, with a minimum of three dollars of those that will see an increase. Next slide, please. The overall impact for service personnel will be slightly greater at thirty-nine point three percent, who will see an increase. But as shown in this chart, only two hundred and one should see an increase, and of those two hundred and one, one hundred and eighty are anticipated to see less than a fifty-dollar-a-month increase. So that is ninety percent of service personnel will see less than fifty-dollar-a-month increase, again with the same one hundred and thirty-one dollar increase in gross per paycheck. So no increase, so the increase in gross pay will outpace the increase in PEIA. Next slide, please. This equalization and rolling up of the levy pays does not come without a cost. The total impact of this pay table update is two point four million dollars. A large portion of that increase is related to the equalization of service and professional local salary supplements. A large portion of that increase is related to the equalization of service and professional local salary supplements. That will equate to about $861,000 cost to the district when looking at both the rolled-up salary portion and the Jefferson County experience portion of that equalization. The next large portion of the cost is the basic salary increase. This is mainly due to extended contracts, those contracts over 200 days. Currently, 23.5% of all Jefferson County staff are on extended contracts. Our average contract in the district is just over 209 days. These extended contracts include principals, assistant principals, secretaries, band directors, athletic directors, custodians, administrative personnel, maintenance staff, counselors, and many more. The other costs associated with the pay table updates would be related to substitutes and extra duty work. All substitutes will receive the supplemental pay because it will be a part of the pay table. So this includes our LTSPs, any long-term service substitutes, day-to-day substitutes, et cetera. So this would increase all service substitutes, bus operators, custodians. Hopefully, this subpay increase will be a recruiting tool for some additional substitutes to assist with the ever-increasing sub shortages. All extra duty pay will be increased as this will increase hourly rates for all personnel. It will increase pay for extra runs for bus drivers, planning period coverage for teachers, extra hours for custodians, coverage for custodial shifts by other classes, and daily rates and hourly rates for all those working in summer positions as just a few examples of where this hourly increase will be seen. In conclusion, as we've seen these updates to our pay tables and the equalization of local salary supplements represent a significant step forward in recognizing the value of all Jefferson County Schools employees. These changes will bring us into compliance with state guidelines and ensure fair and equitable compensation to all of our staff. We're also committing to continuing to find ways to increase our pay tables to be more competitive and to reflect our local cost of living. However, we recognize that this is not a comfortable change and we are working on ways to make the transition smooth for our staff. Ask Mrs. Springer to present some information about that.
Thank you. We recognize that many of our staff have come to rely on the levy checks, as we affectionately call them, to use for key times of the year, November, March, and May. And these things might coincide with additional expenses or in May with things such as the additional PEA payments that come out double to cover for the summer. To ensure our staff are still able to have access to these kinds of checks and payments, we were able to work with JSB, our banking partner, and come up with a solution that allows for everybody to have three lump sum payments per year. The partnership with Jefferson Security Bank would be called the Three Bell Savings Club. These would be custom payouts that you could choose. They would be, you could either do three payouts in March, May, and November as you currently receive or one payout at which date you choose. They would be automated secondary payroll deductions. Even if you don't have a JSB account currently, you could open one just for this. It would not be your entire paycheck had to be deposited into this account. It would simply be a small set aside deduction. JSB's our partner has offered a 2% APY or annual interest rate on that for our staff to give a little bit of a bonus to using the program. And this would be post-tax, so you could choose to do it on your total levy pay of gross or net. So you may receive $1,000 in levy pay, but your click home would be $700. So you could make a decision on how much you wanted to set aside. These payments would be available to, through direct deposit for you or via check through JSB. And JSB has also graciously agreed as our partner to come out to our schools to help people enroll. This partnership will go into effect this year in anticipation of these changes so that people already have money starting to be put aside for next November for their first payout if that's when they so choose to receive it. And I'll send it back to Ms. Loring for next steps.
Our next steps is to update the pay tables for fiscal year, our school year '27, which would make immediate improvement to service personnel pay. It brings us into compliance with West Virginia Department of Education and our IRS. The second step is the continued review of budget pieces to look at our programs, operational efficiencies in staffing, and how improvements in those areas can impact compensation abilities positively. And then advocacy to state legislatures about pay and funding formula. Jefferson County School teachers becoming National Board Certified to impact their compensation positively. And as we mentioned in the beginning of the presentation about the components of the budgeting process, the next step that we'd like to review and present information on would be programs within Jefferson County Schools and what opportunities lie in that area to make positive growth and positive changes for the school system.
I have some questions and comments.
Okay.
Well, first of all, I think it's wonderful that JSB Bank is offering, I'm sorry, I don't know if you can see me, this savings account or program. Is it, would it be true to say that the way that the money's going to be distributed now would show up as extra money in the retirement, in the employee's retirement account, which is another benefit?
Kristen's coming to the mic since she's in finance.
Currently, the levy pays are subject to retirement, so for a totally employee, they would not necessarily see a boost in their retirement. However, for anyone on an extended contract, also for our service personnel, they would see a boost in their retirement eligible wages.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't sure exactly how it worked. I did a study on this issue of locality pay and 8,000 isn't nearly enough. 20,000 was closer. And because it doesn't matter what the average pay is, it doesn't matter if we are in the top 10 or, you know, number one in the state, it's the value of the money. And so far, the way that policymakers that I've worked with have tried to evaluate it is based on home values. And when you are looking at these salaries, some of these salaries, you're looking at areas in the state where the home value or the cost of a new home or a cost of a home is maybe 150,000, where in Jefferson County, the cost to purchase a home is 350 over 500,000. So this is what needs to be considered. It's not just about comparing, you know, salaries. Another thing that I was going to mention that you may not have considered is that when you compare teacher salaries in Jefferson County to maybe Loudoun County or Washington County, a lot of counties, any other county where I've worked, any other state, teachers, especially at the high school, middle school level, they get two planning periods. Jefferson County, the teachers get one planning period and that is extra work. So we're not just comparing the number of days that you work, but it's the number of, the amount of actual time you're face-to-face at, on the front lines, working with students. So, you know, if there isn't money available, there are other things to alleviate some of the pressure from teachers. And I don't want to get into what I've seen works, but I'll just stay on this topic. The other thing I wanted to mention is to make sure that when you're, because Dr. Bishop said this is part of a bigger picture. It's important to work with the unions to see what they're suggesting and recommending. And yeah, I agree that it's, it's working with the policymakers. And I'm glad that Mr. Andrews was there tonight and he is the delegate. And he's a delegate for Jefferson County, so I suggest that every board member there have a talk with him. I wish that I could be there to talk with him to, I'm sure that if he knew how to move locality pay, you know, improve things that he would. And I'm happy to share all the resources and research that I've done on locality pay. And I think that's about everything. So that's all. Thank you.
Well, Delegate Andrews, I'm, I am glad you are here. I hope you've been taking some really good notes and that you can somehow figure out a magical unicorn way to help us survive this teacher and employment crisis because that's what it really is.
Yeah, Delegate Andrews is already sending a couple of texts while we're here already. So yeah, the ball's already, the ball's already rolling.
Just can I make one follow-up too? Absolutely, Dr. Joy, you know, 20,000 would, would be great. 8,000 was just mentioned as a starting point. Because we know when we look at those things that, from our standpoint, what we recommend in compensation strategies is the next, is the min. That's usually the sustainable part that we can recommend, but absolutely, we agree that 20,000 would be amazing. But as we mentioned, 8,000 was just the starting point that we were talking about. So thank you very much. I appreciate your feedback.
But let me ask a question because from what I understand, 25% of our professional employees and 39% of our service employees will receive less money than they do today. Is that correct?
No, they will see an increase in their PEA premium, but it would still be less. That increase would be less than their salary increase. So no one should receive less in their net per paycheck, even with the PEA increase. And there are some, in your appendices to your, to the presentation, there are several examples that we ran of people who had an increase in the PEA premium just to verify that no one, at the end of the day, based on our analysis, will receive less money per paycheck.
Right, but if they get the same amount per paycheck that they do today, and just bear with me because I'm just trying to figure this out. If they, let's say they get $1,000 in their paycheck today. And then with the levy increase in their pay minus the increase in PEA, they get $1,010. So their net pay has not gone down at all, correct?
Correct.
However, they're no longer receiving those three checks a year.
Correct. And we did some analysis to, to kind of compare the net pay with levy pays versus their net pays overall. And it works out to be close to equivalent, not exactly equivalent for most, for, for those that we ran. We can't obviously run the analysis for every employee, but we did try to pick a variety of employees to run that range. There are so many factors involved in, you know, what their net pay might look like. Do they have additional withholding? Are they in a different tax bracket? When we give the, you know, when the levy pay is more than their regular paycheck, are they in a different tax bracket there? So there are so many factors that we can't give exact, you know, I can't make a promise that says no one will see. I can say based on our analysis, no one will see net less in their net regular paycheck. Everyone will see an increase there. That increase then could be put into the JSB savings plan that could then sub, assist in subsidizing those November, March, and May payments.
But that may not come up to the total of the November, March, and May payments today.
Correct. It may not. I can't make any promises that it would for sure match that. But our effort is to give employees still the, the option with that JSB plan.
Right. No, and I, I think that's a good option, but let me ask you a question. I know that the Department of Ed isn't liking these lump sum payments.
Correct.
Some of our neighboring counties, they do a housing allowance. Do they do that as a lump sum or do they do that per pay period? Do we know?
They do that as a lump sum, but that would also be out of compliance with what WVDE has provided us as what it takes to be in compliance with code. The only, per WVD, the only allowed lump sum payments are the attendance incentive and early retirement incentives. Those are the only lump sum payments that can be paid outside of the pay table for things other than supplemental work. So obviously, we can pay for extra duty work. We can pay you if you're taking on additional responsibilities as a lead teacher or a department chair. You know, we can pay you for those, but the only things that WVDE, that is authorized in state code to be paid as a lump sum is the attendance incentive and early retirement incentive.
No signing bonuses or anything like that?
No.
I'm just trying to figure this out. I mean, I just want to make sure that, you know, the increases that people are getting are not eaten up by the PEA contributions.
Right. And I've done analysis to attempt to, you know, prove that that is not the case. Obviously, there may be, you know, a one-off that, that does end up being in that one circumstance that happens to bump them into a, a PEA bracket that is a larger increase than the analysis has shown. But as I went through, like I said, no one should see more than $97 a month in PEA premium increase. And there won't be any less than $131.25 a paycheck, so 200, or a pay. So $260 a month in increase at a minimum and a $97 a month maximum increase in your deduction. So you're still looking at at least $160 in increase in gross pay.
Yes and no. Well, you're looking at that as an increase, but you're still looking at a loss because you're not going to get the levy check. You know what I mean? So I don't think, I think we have to keep it-
It's not an actual increase. It's an increase for that month.
Right, but I think we have to keep it separate that, because I do think that's another combative issue that we need to address, you know, through the legislature, Mr. Andrews, and see what they can do to help us out. Because in my opinion, if we could do it, I don't even care if it's legal, what are they going to do, fine, like whatever we would need to do, I would 100% rip the Band-Aid and say, screw you, PEA. We're going to advocate for ourselves and we're going to go to the market and see who can take our multitude of staff members and give us a decent premium for health insurance. And which, you know, I know in West Virginia, this PEA is, is a godlike thing. And again, some of our, most of our employees say that they have good healthcare coverage, which is the bottom line of what we need. But to, to say that our premiums, you know, are going to increase by 25% or something crazy, which I'm not saying that they are, I'm just saying, if that was the case, and then us not being able to, like a normal business, be able to go and negotiate for our folks to say, hey, we're going to switch the insurance this year. We're not going to take that. Now we're going to have lacrosse boot shield or we're going to have whatever because we negotiated a better rate for you, but we don't have that, that, we're not allowed to do that, which I think is, is mind-boggling. But yet the WVDE can tell us how we can pay our people and spend our money. It's so archaic in the system, which I appreciate you guys have laid it out so well. That's very helpful. But then, but I would definitely say that we need to stick with making those lines very clear. We're, we're going to pay, you know, this much more in your salary. And yes, X number of dollars is going to be eaten up away from that because PEA is taking more for your insurance, because that's, that's the fair way for them to look at it. It's also another reason why we've had a couple of staff members, you know, leave because they continue to lose money every year in that and we don't have any negotiating problems with that, which I think is unfair, but.
We've had some internal discussion about insurance and Ms. Loring and I have talked about just to do it, to see from the open market what our rates would be and what coverage levels would be when compared to PEA. Having worked in, with insurance companies on the open market before and negotiated rates and so forth with other school districts, you generally can find yourself a pretty good product at a cheaper cost. So we've been doing that internally, working on that some already, just to be able to have something to compare. just to be able to have something to compare it to. Here's our P I plan, P I A plans. Here are the costs associated with those plans. Here's what we could get on the open market and here's what those costs are. And not only costs, but what the coverage levels are for our employees as well. We don't have that. We don't have that totally collected yet.
And we pay for the dental and the vision as well, I know.
Correct, of levy funds. That is correct.
Then, but it could be.
And sometimes depending on the vendor that you select for your health insurance, vision and dental are already included as part of the plan. As an example, Blue Cross Blue Shield or Anthem often has vision and dental benefits included. So it's not a supplemental cost that the board would incur.
Another thing we have to be very, very clear about is if we raise, let's say, a position from eighteen dollars an hour to twenty-two dollars an hour, that I don't foresee it ever happening, but God forbid the levy doesn't pass. Everybody would then get a pay cut. And so they would go from twenty-three dollars an hour back down to the eighteen. And in contracts or whatever, that would need to be laid out very clearly because without levy, we can't do that extra bump. I mean, there there, this is just so deep.
Correct. Yes, that is a part of state code that says that we that at any point, if a district does not pass uh their excess levy, any levy funds that were contributed to salary can be reduced and would likely must be reduced because we would not have a way to fund those without the excess levy.
Well, try explaining that to the person that's taking a pay cut from twenty-three dollars an hour back down to eighteen without, you know, thinking that that was a levy. With the levy checks, it's very clear these are the levy checks. So.
Right, and that's one of the reasons why um in the packet of information, you'll see that we modified the proposed updated pay table to show the Jefferson County Schools' local funded portion um of the salary so that that is still clearly communicated in the best way that we can um to be sure that staff is aware. And I know that's not the same as receiving a regular, you know, a quarterly kind of bonus, for lack of a better term. But um, that is the best way to kind of show that delineate that this is the state basic. This is the Jefferson County Schools locally funded portion to bring you to your total salary.
If I just moved here from out of state and I saw locally funded portion, that wouldn't click with me that that's a levy that we vote on every five years.
Right, and we do, that's why we do try to send the uh employee benefit letters um that do identify that that local funded portion is from the excess levy. Though, and those go out annually to employees. Typically, they go out in October. This year, we're a little delayed because we wanted to give this presentation before we sent those letters out so we could include a little information for employees when those letters go out.
Do we know how many counties are out of compliance and they pay a lump sum? Are there enough to go to the Department of Ed and say, you know?
That we're out that that are paying, I, the only other county that I know that is out of compliance that is paying a lump sum is our neighboring county. Um, I'm not aware of any others.
Our neighbor.
Our only neighbor. In the state.
So just so that I'm clear for clarity purposes, um, if I was thinking outside the box and I have a teacher A who's teaching a class, who's really, really good at it at one high school, and all of a sudden, we use our brilliant technology of the new age to fill a position in another school and filter them in like a virtual and they teach another set of students over here with, you know, an aide in that classroom. Um, we could then, it would be legal to pay them a sizable bump to teach in two schools or two classrooms with material because they're grade A teacher one. We don't have a grade A math teacher one, but we might have one that could teach at both schools and then get two planning periods or something like that. Would be something that would be legal if we had to start getting really creative and think outside the box, correct? Because that would be a a stipend to their salary and that's legal?
Yes, we can pay stipends or additions to their salary for duties above their regular contract. So assuming teaching an additional course would be outside of their their standard contract, which is to teach, which is to be, you know, available seven periods a day at this high school if they're also teaching in another classroom, you know, then yes, I do think that stipend could be.
It would not be paid as a lump sum, though. It would still be divided over the twenty-four pays.
Okay.
So you mentioned, um, while we're on that.
Yeah.
Yes, time worked over forty. They do receive time and a half.
So Kristen, you mentioned at the very end that you that the annual information that goes out to everyone, you said it's delayed because you want you want to wait till this briefing. Would you mind sharing a little bit what, on your thoughts on what information, additional information you're going to be providing in there that's based off of this?
Uh, well, I think we wanted to uh include some information regarding the option for the savings for next year. We'll be able to to set aside for that. And we didn't feel that we should present that information to employees before we had presented that information here.
Okay.
We want to try to get that information out pretty quickly so people can begin taking advantage of it now if they want to. As opposed to waiting to the start of the next fiscal year, that if somebody wanted to start the traditional Christmas club account, vacation club account, whatever we used to refer to it as, that they could start that now versus waiting to July.
Yep.
Yeah, the November and the um one in late spring are kind of the two most, I mean, they're all important, but those are the two that are very significant to our employees. And the one in the spring, most importantly, is the fact that we have to do double deductions for insurance in May and June to cover July and August. And so that that last levy pay helps with those increased costs. So they wanted to go ahead and get that started. Even though we still have those payments, it just gives them an option if they want to start it to use it for those purposes and they have that available too. But I don't, didn't know if you were aware of that, but I just want to make sure that you knew that information too.
And you're not asking us to approve this plan this evening. You're just proposing this for fiscal year twenty-seven. This would not affect this year's levy checks.
Correct.
Correct, yeah. This is, this is, um, as we mentioned, informational purposes. So that way, um, we can kind of get the compliance issue addressed, um, find a way to um tackle some of the compensation questions that are in our control. Um, but the bigger thing is to is to to set the communication out there so we can start advocating and um pleading for some assistance and support to get our compensation strategy in a way in a place that is needed in Jefferson County.
And you said we were not in compliance with the IRS. Is that, could you explain that?
Uh, there are some IRS regulations regarding lump sum payments and the taxation of those payments. Um, and there there are some things that we've been looking into and the potential to need to implement additional taxes on those lump sum payments.
Does our payroll system not automatically adjust? You know, if your normal pay is, you know, eight hundred dollars, it taxes it X rate. And then all of a sudden, you get a check for twelve hundred dollars, it's going to tax it X plus a little bit. Does a payroll system not automatically do that?
It does. However, bonuses should be taxed at a flat rate, which is twenty-two percent. Flat rate, which is would be a pretty good chunk of a paycheck of those levy checks. So to be in compliance with the IRS, we should withhold the twenty-two percent on all of our levy pays because they are paid as a lump sum outside of cycle with a regular pay.
But they would get that back in April when they filed their taxes, correct?
Correct, potentially, yes.
Maybe.
Or not have to pay as much when they pay their taxes.
So do we um already have a meeting or will you be setting up a meeting? Maybe with Delegate Chris Anders um to discuss what we were saying about.
Delegate Anders, Anders and I spoke on the phone today. And I did let him know that I will share these documents with him. It's also attached to our uh pre our board agenda for tonight. So but I did tell him that I would share that with him by email so that he has this presentation as well as this supporting documentation to go with it. And what, since I mentioned that, there is a comparison packet there that has a ton of information, pay scales, it's all marked as draft. Um, there's some individual with names removed, of course, uh pay stubs that are there so you can see what's being withheld and et cetera. So there's a lot of information in that packet as well.
And I'm sure, I hope Delegate Anders would agree with me, but this is a, this is going to be a team effort, well, not just with Delegate Anders, but the other local delegates that are within this county. So it's definitely have to be a team effort. But it's good to have Delegate Anders on your side. Appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
I have a question when you're finished. Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
The um attendance incentive, is that something that's considered a lump sum? Is that something that um we could look at increasing? I mean, it used to be a thousand dollars. I don't know if you can hear me this.
Can, yeah, and that's actually a great question and one that we talk about a lot um that we've talked about for several years. Um, to be honest and to be frank about it, the attendance incentive doesn't really produce the goals and the results that we want with attendance. We would prefer to just give it to employees. I don't want, yeah, I wouldn't want them to have to earn on it. I mean, I know it is one way that the state allows us to do that, but they already do. I think if we have the capability to give some extra money, I just want to give it to them. I don't want them to have to earn it, if that makes sense. They already do.
Already earning it.
Um, so that means that I can, um, it is.
There's a very small percentage of employees.
So that means it is okay to increase it.
Yeah, and it's possible, I mean, it, there are possibilities that it would achieve the results that you want out of an attendance incentive if our sick days were, you know, able to be used for something. If they, if most of our employees now underneath the retirement system that most of us are in, um, if you don't use your sick days anymore, they don't translate into to any sort of benefit. So our employees would rather use those days because there's no opportunity for them to benefit from them later on. They save, there's no benefit to saving them.
Well, that's something they need to address, right?
So that's another piece of it. So there's, yeah, there's just, there's a lot. Yeah, this is, this is, this was really about pay. But there are so many other opportunities that can be explored as far as a total compensation plan or a total benefit plan for our employees. Um, but yeah, there's, there's a lot of opportunity that are additional things.
Um, I I just want to finish my question.
Go ahead.
It it sounds like that it is something that's legal to do, that we can give an um attendance incentive and um I I mean, I know when I taught, many teachers never took off because they wanted, we wanted the extra thousand dollar bonus on top of this additional twenty thousand that we're shooting for through the legislation. But um, any extra money that we can find uh for teachers. So it's not in it, it it's not uh in lieu of, it's in addition to is what I'm asking. And if um, if if it's legal, then um it may help with the the number of subs. And unless there's some hard data that shows that it's not uh cutting down on the number of subs and it's not saving money in other ways by not having to pay subs, not having less qualified teachers in the classroom. Um, i- is there that data? Um, or are you just, like, where did you get that? That you're, that it's not working?
I'm happy to do some analysis on our employees and those that do receive uh the attendance incentive and what that percentage looks like.
Oh, it, is that like five hundred dollars or how much is that?
It's a five hundred.
Right, but I know when it was a thousand, it it did matter. So if it was twenty-five hundred, it might matter even more. So, you know, this is why it's important to talk, ask the employees what would help them. Unions, what would help? And, you know, look, we have plenty of past data. When it used to be a thousand dollars, you can look at the attendance because I know that many teachers at Jefferson High School, when I taught there, we never took a day off because we wanted that thousand dollars. Now, a thousand dollars may not be as much value now, but it it's, um, I just think that it might help a couple of other issues like the subs. Um, and quali- qualified teachers in the classroom in addition to twenty thousand dollars more. That's all.
So Kristen, if we can't do a lump sum housing allowance, what we need to start looking at is a lump sum food allowance and start buying thousand dollar Martin's gift cards and um handing those out. Good luck collecting P E I on that.
Unfortunately, gift cards are a big no-no.
It's even a bigger no.
It'll be included in their W two, just not.
As a fringe benefit?
Exactly.
I do think um to Dr. Joy's point, um, there was many a time that we have done that study. I know that does exist um because of when we went from decreasing the attendance benefit and then from when we went to not having an attendance benefit. I think it did correlate as well with the new um uh the new retirement system that those days, then you did not, you didn't get to turn those days into years of service. Um, and when the legislature changed that, it kind of just tanked that benefit, as I recall. So I do think that the data is there even just to peruse um from previously and what was done, even when it was a thousand, what that was, and then when it went to five hundred. But yet the law changed, they can't use the days. Um, also, I remember through the discussion from the different staff members, if some felt it was a little bit of um an unfair benefit to your point of just giving everyone the same amount of money because if you have a child and the child gets sick, you end up losing that and it's not necessarily fair to those who maybe don't have children um or that person who wants to, they just need that mental health day, but then they don't feel like they can take it because then they're not going to get paid the same as somebody else. Um, so there there was a lot, I just remember that conversation um at this point, got to be ten years ago, maybe.
Yeah.
Um, but I do remember it's there. I remember the data is there as to why it it may or may not be a good incentive to use. But, you know, to her point, I think it's good to look at the data to have why we are decided not to or to do it.
Right, right. No, you're you're correct. It did switch with the correlation with the change in the re- in the retirement and how you could use the days. And, you know, just hearing from, yeah, and hearing from employees, you know, for over ten years. But um I think the state did use um a survey um maybe two years ago. So we can check with them to see what data that collected and what those responses were. And then if it doesn't answer that question, then we can look into that too. Absolutely.
Thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate you guys being here with us this evening.
Thank you very much.
I know a lot of, a lot of hours probably.
It's, it's important. Um, and um it's very complex and multifaceted. So um to do it with fidelity, it takes time and thoughtfulness. And um, um, everybody was dedicated to doing it and looking at it with um a lens that at the end of the day, um, I know it didn't move the needle or we didn't come out with some, you know, earth shattering news and announcements. Um, but um, it it starts the information process and sharing. And at the end of the day, no matter what, anybody who is a part of this process, and I know that you guys are in the same boat with us based on your questions, based on your feedback that you have, that this is a starting point, I said it over and over again, but we all want more money in our employees' pockets and anything that we can do to make that happen. I think we've all gotten on the same page tonight and have been that we're committed to seeing what we can do together.
That's the most important thing, to make sure we're moving the needle up and not decreasing anybody's pay.
Correct. Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And we don't have any unfinished business this evening. And new business, item A has been delivered. And we don't have any unfinished business this evening and new business, item A has been deleted. So now we'll go to Neola policy updates for August twenty twenty-five. It's the second batch.
Yes, this is the second set of revised policies that are coming before you this evening for, and the request is to place them out for public comment. There are both revisions, technical corrections in this list, as well as several new policies. One related to the new state legislation on parents' bill of rights, on student groups, restroom and changing facilities and those being designated as single-sex only, AI, and then school security personnel. Those are the new policies that are part of this packet. And again, the request is that these be placed out for public comment until the next meeting.
All right. Is there a motion to put the following Neola policies out for public comment? Policy number twenty-three twelve, twenty-four eleven, twenty-four fifty-one, twenty-six oh five, twenty-six twenty-three, fifty-one thirteen, fifty-two hundred, fifty-three thirty, fifty-three thirty-five, fifty-three forty, fifty-three fifty, fifty-four sixty, fifty-six hundred, fifty-seven twenty-two, fifty-seven eighty point zero one, fifty-eight forty, fifty-eight ninety-five, seventy-four twenty-one, seventy-five forty point zero eight, 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 eight three three zero, eight three five zero, eighty-four hundred, eighty-four hundred point zero one, eighty-five hundred and eighty-eight hundred. Is there a motion to put those out for public comment?
A motion.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Upson. Any discussion? Here are none, all in favor of putting out the following policies for public comment? Twenty-three twelve, twenty-four eleven, twenty-four fifty-one, twenty-six oh five, twenty-six twenty-three, fifty-one thirteen, fifty-two hundred, fifty-three thirty, fifty-three thirty-five, fifty-three forty, fifty-three fifty, fifty-four sixty, fifty-six hundred, fifty-seven twenty-two, fifty-seven eighty point zero one, fifty-eight forty, fifty-eight ninety-five, seventy-four twenty-one, seventy-five forty point zero eight, eighty-three thirty, eighty-three fifty, eighty-four hundred, eighty-four hundred point zero one, eighty-five hundred and eighty-eight hundred. All in favor of putting those out for public comments? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have board member comments and committee reports. Dr. Joy, do you wanna start?
Okay. Trying to get my video to go. Let's see, well, I, I, I just thought we should take a moment to recognize a former Jefferson County Schools employee who recently passed away, Gloria Meadow. She was a secretary at Harper's Ferry High School and later Harper's Ferry Middle School. She worked in the Personnel Office for many years. She's the, I believe, the mother of Peachy Deal, who was a teacher at Jefferson High School. So I just thought it was important that we recognize her. I wanted to apologize that I'm not there in person. I was invited to a private screening of a documentary on personal finance instruction and advocating for personal finance instruction for students across the country. And because of my work as an advocate and helping to get personal finance, the credit requirement for West Virginia, I was invited to this presentation and conference in Boston. And they gave me a shirt, Financial Freedom for All. I don't know if you can see it, but it's a really cool shirt. So that's why I wasn't, not there today. Let's see. Dr. Bishop and I attended the Epic Meeting last week and there was a wonderful presentation on all the ways that our children are served. So I, I just, it, it was overwhelming, just amazing how much children in, in all of the surrounding counties benefit from Head Start and other services through Epic. And the last thing is tomorrow, we celebrate Veterans Day. So I wanted to recognize and honor all of the staff who are also veterans and thank them all for their service and including our board members. Mr. Upson. So that's everything.
Thank you. Ms. Bratton, do you have anything to share?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Upson, for your service. Also, I would like to shout out Big Mike's Grillin' and Rancin' for offering free kids' meals while the SNAP program funds are on hold. I want to thank Boots on the Ground Leadership Academy for taking, we took some of, we took eight of our Jefferson County students to WVU for campus tour last Thursday. I wanna thank Teresa Holmes, who's the organization owner, for putting that together. Jeffrey Berry, who is a pastor in our community, for driving us and then offering to drive us anytime when we go to other colleges. Barbara Haines and myself, we were the chaperones, but we, the next time we go will be in March and we're asking, you know, we're looking for other students to also be a part of this as well as parents. Jefferson County Parks and Rec, on December the sixteenth, they're offering a big blui holiday party, four to five thirty, and then again from six to seven thirty, the tickets are fifteen dollars. That will be at Charles Washington Hall, which is one hundred West Washington Street in Charlestown. You must register for this event. I'd like to go back to Boots on the Ground, I'm sorry. On February twenty-fourth, we will be taking students to Charleston for Black Policy Day. All students are welcome to go on this trip. More information will come out concerning this, but this is a huge day for our students. I listened to, when we went Thursday, the last part of the tour was voters' registration advocacy, but also the students that were there that had attended Black Policy Day. They, last year, they had a lot to talk about. Some of them were students of WVU who were currently, at that time, Jefferson County students and Berkeley County students, both counties get to go. And it's just really nice because some of the students get to go down on the floor and actually speak. Some of the delegates or, or others that are there, they meet with the students and actually hear what the students have to say. I know Patricia Rucker met with some of our students last year. And it's just a huge day, so I would definitely encourage students and parents who would like to go to please just listen now. Like I said, there's more information to come because I don't have the person that you need to contact, but I will be announcing that soon. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just encourage everyone, if you get the opportunity, to please take time to personally thank a veteran tomorrow for serving in the the greatest country in the world. Thank you.
I would just echo that sentiment, definitely Veterans Day near and dear to my heart, with my two sons who serve. And I appreciate your service as well, Ms. Upson, and those who, I know we have staff members' families as well and children throughout the county. And I have a great ROTC program that has put out a lot of leadership in that role as well. So just remember to, to do that tomorrow and just looking forward to the holidays with giving everybody a break, which would be nice. And just been able to attend some of the different events, games and, and whatnot going on through our county. And I would just suggest to the community, when you get a chance to stop in and see an event or a play things that are going on in the school, to keep yourself apprised of all of the great and wonderful things that happen in our county. Even if you don't have students currently in the system, it's really great to see the passion and the just innovation and drive of our young people. So just invite everybody to check it out.
Thank you very much. Not only Veterans Day, but I think we should also wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving because we're not gonna meet until after Thanksgiving. Hard to believe it's already here or almost here. And everybody hopefully will enjoy that entire week off. Dr. Bishop, do you have anything to say this evening?
Just a couple of items. First, schools will be closed, all offices will close tomorrow, observance of Veterans Day. Thank you to all of our veterans, our employees who have served, as well as those in our community who have served both at home and abroad over the years. We appreciate your service. And then Mrs. Marcus is in the process of collecting some data for you on AP fees. After the last meeting, I asked her to do some, some analysis of those fees and she's been working with both high school principals to do that. So it's more involved than you might think. So she's in the process of pulling that data together. That's all I have.
Thank you. And do we have an executive session this evening?
Yes, we do, for personnel.
All right. Is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel discussion for West Virginia Code six dash nine dash four two A? Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Is there a second? On favor of going to executive session for personnel for West Virginia Code six nine, six dash nine dash four two A? Please say aye. Oppose?
Aye.
And will there be action?
Yes, there will.
All right, and we do anticipate action. Thank you. All right. And we do anticipate action. Thank you. Okay. All right. Is there a motion to go back into a class session? A motion. All in favor of returning to the session? Say aye.
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 Is there a motion to support the superintendent's recommendation for unpaid personal leave of absence for Laura Caesar?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of supporting the superintendent's recommendation for unpaid personal leave of absence for Laura Caesar? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have, um, is there a motion to support the superintendent's recommendation for suspension without pay effective November 5th, 2025, and termination effective November 10th, 2025, of Taylor Staub's? Thank you, Mr. Upson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of supporting the superintendent's recommendation of suspension without pay effective November 5th, 2025, and termination effective November 10th, 2025, of Taylor Staub's? Say aye.
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 Oppose? All right. Thank you very much. 8:09. Meeting adjourned.